Paula James. Good evening.
Good evening to the head table. Good evening to the tenants. My name is Paula James and I live at 13 Sampton, New York Avenue, namely Flatbush Gardens Apartment 5C. Today, I am joining with my fellow tenants to ask for a rent roll back. Having a rent roll back, all of us will be able to live comfortably and able to pay our rents on time without hurting. Now, I will give you an example of what can happen to us tenants. I like to pay my rent on time. One month, when my receipt came, I don't normally open my receipt because I know I don't owe rent and I know what's the amount. So, something said to me, "Open this receipt." When I opened it, I saw I have an arrhythmia for one month. Well, I got diarrhea right away without laxative because I am struggling to pay that one month's rent. What will I do to get that two months' rent? Anyway, I knew, but just like that, you know, it just, your heart gave boop. And I know I have my receipt. So, I tried to control myself and then I went over to the office and things were sorted out and so on and they told me, well, they apologized, et cetera, et cetera. But what I'm trying to tell you, what could happen to us tenants. Now, I have diabetes. I could have gotten a heart attack and I live alone. Nobody knows what went on. So, I was so happy that they came to some conclusion and not to have me running around and I had my receipt, thank God. So, tenants feel...
Ms. James, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you.
Okay.
Your time is up.
All right, please. We need a rent roll back. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Scott Tankersley, Amanda Champion, and Andrea or Andrea Shapiro. Scott Tankersley? He's not here? All right.
Hi, I'm Amanda Champion and I'm a volunteer for the Met Council Hotline. People, pick up, please.
Yes.
People call us in crisis. People cannot get repairs and then they get charged for the repairs after they leave. But not everyone has a place to go if they can leave. People are barely surviving due to this gentrification that the rezonings brought about that did not protect the little guy. The landlords are anticipating on this. And the costs of all living has gone up. Affordable grocery stores, Mom &amp; Pop 99-cent stores, and family-run drugstores are closing because they cannot pay these increased rents. This means everything in the cost of living for the little guys is going up. Landlords complain about costs going up only for them. There hasn't been significant increase in food stamps and as well as the well-publicized as of last September, there was zero increase in people living on just Social Security or disability. So, it is true that we cannot ignore economics. Incomes haven't gone up for those working families who have come to you to ask for rent rollbacks and the cost of living has gone up for those and for the people living on Social Security checks. The cost of medications has gone up and it is the business budgets. It is true that the business budgets only survive with income increases, but unless they are wealthy, as both Democratic candidates keep reminding us of, their incomes haven't gone up and the cost of living has. As the costs they're worried about are not conveniences like saving for an extra mortgage payment or leaving their savings school or a certain kind of car. So, I ask you, are you going to keep protecting those who complain that they are not there yet and that they can only afford a Honda? Or are you going to help people to stay in their homes? As rises in costs and everything else with no increase in money is really biting in the gums.
Thank you, Ms. Champion. Are you Ms. Shapiro?
My name is Andrea Shapiro. I'm the program coordinator for the Met Council on Housing. I'm also a lifelong Brooklyn tenant. Our tenant rights hotline and our housing clinic, we hear from rent stabilized tenants who are desperately fighting against higher rents. We hear from thousands of them every year. Despite the rent freeze this year, landlords have been raising rent with fees on air conditioners, washing machines, as well as adding late fees. They've also been finding MCI's to charge tenants while we're refusing to do repairs. The average tenant pays 35% of their income for rent. Our members and callers often tell us they're paying 50, 60% of their income towards rent each year. They cannot afford to pay one cent more and are desperate to figure out what to do about their fees and to fight an MCI, which often takes years from the state. Our members are hurting. Their incomes have remained flat or they've lost a job. They have nowhere else to turn. There's no one there to help them with their rent. They are being forced out of their neighborhoods and out of New York City. This is breaking up communities and hurting the Brooklyn that I know and love. And it's time for a rent roll back.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Ann Goodrich, Jan Vaughn, and Melvin Faulkner.
D R G B members. So, I'm Ann Goodrich and also representing Crown Heights Union, but I also represent Occupy Wall Street. The reason why we are in the middle of this housing crisis because number one, the rent too high and the wages are getting too low. And number two, number two, there are a lot of homeless children and family are still living in city shelters every single day because they cannot afford to live in their housing because that's shameful. Now you got corporate hedge funds as a special entry trying to destroy every neighborhood of color, every immigrant community that were built on it for generations. And now, because I'm also a Crown Heights representative myself for the 29 years. And now you have a lot of gentrification that have been bought out. Save for the flat board, save for the left of garden in the same part of Sunset Park. Now the next target is the Sheep's Head Bay at Cooley Millwood, where there'll be another two hot spots for real estate. They're even totally ridiculous. They're unfair, they've been whole overlected, and that's a recipe for the real corruption. Corruption and bribery don't make a thing. Now the Brazil under investigation, what he done? Before he became, before he would join, he was here to protect us, not the entities behind closed doors. The Brazil and Governor Cuomo are friends of, what do you call it? Hides under the Clinton administration. Now they're like mixed reactions with each other. That's not true. When it did happen, the Brazil should be one-term mayor if he don't get his act right. And please roll back these rents because this corruption ready to happen. And we don't want no private schemes coming through anybody else's doorstep. You had to tax, tax the Wall Street, tax the rent and hold these heads up, any green slummers accountable.
Thank you, Ms. Goodrich. Jan Vaughn?
Good evening. My name is Jan Vaughn and I'm just thankful for this opportunity to express my feelings throughout the years I've been living in Brooklyn. My rent has been constantly increasing. I'm supposed to be living in a stabilized apartment, but right now I'm in court with my landlord. He's trying to say the apartment is not stabilized when I know it is. And I'm just tired of the harassment. He's forcing me to move to a one-bedroom apartment to pay the same price that I'm paying for a three-bedroom apartment. And it's really terrible. When I first moved in my apartment, I have been living there for six years. When I first moved in, my rent was 1320. Now he wants me to pay 1585. So, he gave me a $200 increase within a year. And it's just devastating. I'm really tired of it. Since I've been living in New York City, I've never been really feeling happy. There's always a problem. Every evening I come home, there's something leaking, something broken. It takes months before the landlord can make repairs. And I'm just really, really tired. And I think instead of increasing the rent, we all deserve a decrease in the rent.
Thank you. Thank you. Melvin Faulkner?
My name is Melvin Faulkner. I'm being represented for the Honorable Charles Byron of the 60th Assembly District in Brooklyn, New York. Basically, our argument is that there not only should be a rent roll back, it should be for two consecutive years. One reason? Landlords can only count one way, upward. But if you get upward, then sooner or later, a downward trend. For eight consecutive years, they got their increases. I haven't heard one landlord here or anywhere else in the city of New York say, "Don't give it to me. Roll it back, I'm not justified in getting it." We were in court recently with a tenant from Star City, we don't mind calling names. Star City ran up there with a lawyer. I represented the tenant. And I want you to know, we beat them because they were falsified figures. And that's happening all across the city of New York. Landlords falsify figures in order to get the increases that they unjustly deserve. So, when I say to you, not only take it away from them now, but take them away for two years, two consecutive years. They're not entitled to it because in other words, they're going to cry over spilt milk. But who's going to represent the tenants who've been crying for years over the same spilt milk? So, I say to you, Rent Guidelines Board, take it away from them.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Mary Crosby, Michael Gillette, and Lucia Muniz.
Okay. Is this working? Yes, it is. Okay. Hi, my name is Mary Crosby. I'm a former rent stabilized tenant for 36 years. And now I'm a volunteer with Metropolitan Council on Housing. I want to approach the issue before the board from a little different angle than I might have in the past because frankly, times have changed and they call for a new approach. Back in the day when I was a rent stabilized tenant, let's say 25, 30 years ago, just to pick a time, when everyone more or less, in my impression, played by the rules. I didn't have a problem accepting the periodic rent increases because I thought that landlords were entitled to cover maintenance costs and have their expenses met. It seemed to be a fair exchange for services rendered. But today, times are different. The system is not fair. Now we are in the days of vacancy decontrol, eviction bonuses, preferential rents, and other legal loopholes which function as irresistible incentives for landlords to drive tenants out of rent stabilized units in order to reap enormous financial rewards by converting the rent stabilized units into market rate units or condos. Let's remember that the New York State Housing laws were and are intended to preserve and protect the housing stock and to prevent speculation, which destroys the housing market and destabilizes communities. The very speculation today, which is happening today, driving up the cost of housing, driving it through the roof. Rent stabilized apartments are the largest block of affordable housing available in the city. The so-called affordable units under the new NIH program or other tax incentive programs are not equivalent and are not a replacement for the continuous loss of rent stabilized housing. If the Rent Guidelines Board raises the rent even a small percent, all rent stabilized units come one step closer to the rent threshold of $2,700 and we have the potential loss of thousands of rent stabilized units of affordable housing. In recent years, the Rent Guidelines Board increases have accounted for a substantial part of the rent increases in the rent stabilized units. But the vacancy bonus given to landlords when a tenant leaves has accounted for twice that amount of rent increase from rent stabilized apartments.
I'm sorry, Ms. Crosby, but your time is up. Thank you.
I'm suggesting we need a rent roll back.
Thank you. Michael Gillette?
Hi, good evening, Board. My name is Michael Gillette. I am a young adult trying to put himself through school. However, I'm unable to do that. I'm unable to do that because I'm paying over 40% of my take-home pay every month in rent. I am a rent stabilized tenant, but there's nothing stable about my rent. The reason why is because my landlord has put through not one, not two, not three, but four MCI rent increases. I want you to understand how devastating MCI rent increases are and how insidious of a tool they are against rent stabilized tenants. Landlords are able to collect monies far and above beyond what they pay in terms of ostensible increases to the building. A lot of time, they falsify papers to DHCR. And let me just say for the record that DHCR is a broken, pro-landlord dysfunctional agency. And they do nothing, they do nothing but rubber stamp whatever landlord's put in front of them. I have tried to fight my MCI increase with a par. However, my par was dismissed because they claimed that I responded one day late. They give you 35 days to put together a huge amount of paperwork to fight a landlord. I knew nothing about the process and now I'm stuck with this. So, you were able to give a 0% rent increase last year? That's great, but I wasn't able to enjoy it because I have an automatic $150 rent increase every single time I renew my lease. So, there's nothing but increased rent for me in the future. And it becomes incredibly hard to sustain my life and also pay my bills and go to school at the same time. So, I implore you to put through a rent roll back, if at all possible. Every single year that this board has been in existence, you've given landlords what they wanted in terms of rent increases. There's never been one year where the R G B has given a rent decrease. So, I ask you to do the right thing and give a rent roll back or a 0% freeze for one-year and two-year leases to all tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucia Muniz? I think she needs to interpret it. Yeah, thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Lucia Muniz y soy una orgullosa miembro de la coalición de inquilinos de Flatbush. Vivo en el 417 y he vivido aquí por siete años con mi familia. El dueño de mi edificio es Shalon Rubuskin.
Good evening. My name is Lucia Muniz. And I'm a proud member of the...
Flatbush Tenement Coalition.
The Flatbush Tenement Coalition. I live at 410 East 17th and I have lived here for seven years with my family. The owner of my building is Shalon Rubuskin.
Y estoy aquí para demandar mi derecho a un aumento de renta. Mis razones son iguales a las de la mayoría de inquilinos aquí presentes, las cuales son paredes con pintura con plomo, paredes viejas, cucarachas, ratones, ventanas en mal estado, falta de agua caliente y calefacción durante el invierno, y la lista podría seguir. Mi edificio también ha sido puesto en el programa de reforzamiento alternativo dos veces consecutivas debido a las explorables condiciones del mismo.
I'm here to demand my right to a zero increase in my rent. My reasons are equal to the majority of the tenants here present today, which are paint with lead in it, old walls, cockroaches, mice, dysfunctional windows, a lack of hot water and heat during the winter, and the list could go on. My building was put in an alternative reinforcement program twice in a row due to inadequate conditions and inadequate care.
Yo personalmente he sido acusada por el dueño del edificio, el cual me ha llevado a corte, demandando renta que no le debo. Esperando, yo me cansé de esto y me mudé de mi departamento. Para así poder rentarlo a un precio más alto, ya que el área donde vivo hay un gran demanda de vivienda.
I was personally harassed by the owner of my building, which took me to court demanding rent, that I do not owe him, and waiting for me to get tired and leave. And so, I moved out of my apartment. Pardon?
So that I can...
Esperando para mi...
Yeah.
So that I would move out of my apartment so that he could rent the apartment at a higher price because the area in which I live, there's a great demand for housing.
Para mí en lo personal es muy difícil mudarme ya que los requisitos para rentar hoy día están fuera del alcance de mi familia. Les pido por favor tomar en cuenta mi testimonio y el de todos los inquilinos aquí presentes al momento de tomar una decisión. Gracias.
For me, personally, it is very difficult to move because the requirements to rent a new apartment today are outside of my reach and that of my family. I ask you to please take my testimony into account and that of all the tenants present today at the moment of making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Dawn Keating, Jean Folks, and Georgias Almouti? Dawn Keating, is she here?
She left.
She left? Okay, thank you. Jean Folks?
Good evening or good night. My name is Jean Folks and I'm a member of the Flatbush Tenants Coalition. And I live at 380 East 18th Street. And I have lived there since 1977. This is my third landlord. And I don't know if I should call him a landlord. I have a good name for him, but it would be nice to say it in public. The rent laws were made to protect tenants, rent stabilization laws. But Albany has turned it around and it now protects landlords. They have written the rent laws over the years and the goal of most of the landlords now is to get it to $2,700 and out of rent stabilization. Beside the gentleman who owns a building and said he's tired of harassment and the politicians are only beholden to the people they made campaign promises to, they made bigger promises to the developers. Glenwood Management is one of the biggest developers that they made promises to. And they have kept their promises to the Rent Stabilization Board. Now, for the first time in 47 years, in 2014, the Rent Guidelines Board had a heartfelt tenants and gave us a little relief. And they did it again last year. But all the years when the landlords were getting these big increases, tenants weren't getting increases in salary, it didn't matter. It didn't matter because their pockets were well lined. But we are suffering. I have a landlord who has a subtle way of harassing. He doesn't want us like me. I'm an old bag, I should get out. I'm getting out foot first. I'm not getting on my terms, not on his. He's bringing in tenants from other countries and they do not know the rules. We have 10, 20 tenants living in one apartment. He's dividing the apartments, making up... He has so many violations. And it's time, it started, the Rent Guidelines Board here started, to address the issues of the tenants for the past two years. And I hope you will continue, in your good conscience, to think of the tenants. We are not asking for the impossible. We don't want them to go to jail.
I'm sorry, Ms. Folks, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Georgias Almouti?
Good evening. My name is Georgias Almouti. I got an accent. I will try to do my best to express myself. Please, if you do listen to me, let me know. What I try to do is I represent myself and elderly, yesterday was 80 years old. She cannot come in. And I know that...
Hold the mic closer to your mouth.
I know that, thank you.
Thank you.
I am a gentleman to stay long, I know that. Three things. I live, as I say, my name is Georgias Almouti, but I live at 567 East 27th Street. My landlord's name, according to the H Housing Division, he put the name as B. Litchman. We know him as Joseph Litchman. What I mean is that what we ask for a rent roll back is because most of us, if it's not all of us, cannot afford that increase they want from us. In my case, yesterday, not yesterday, but two days before, there's a tenant in front because I am part of the coalition. And by the way, I have to say that I'm part of the Flatbush Coalition. But we also, we form a little tenant association on 567 East 22. We under umbrella of Flatbush Tenement Coalition, I can say. They help us a lot. Why we cannot get that? Because we cannot afford it, that's one. The second thing is the MCA, the MCI thing. We pay MCI over MCI. We were about to pay an MCI, a previous MCI, while we got a new one. That's one thing. The second thing is the landlord will, for, let's say, in my case, used to be three rooms, but now it is two because there is no more living room and kitchen. It is just one room, the bedroom and one room. Now he signed to charge for three rooms. While we got two, while we got two now. And all, we got A, B, C, D, all is the same, B same, C same. Everything is the same.
Ms. Almouti, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you. But I believe that all of that make us, we cannot afford a rent increase. Please, give us a rent roll back.
Thank you. The next speakers are Phil Smack, Catherine Mathias, and Claudette Augustine.
Good evening. My name is Phil Smack. I'm a 28-year resident of Williamsburg. I'm here on behalf of myself and the Met Council on Housing. And first of all, I just want to take a minute and thank each and every one of you for your time and your service and oftentimes hearing the same thing over and over again. I'll spare you some of the things you've already heard that I feel as well. But I'd like to point out one observation and that is, for the last three or four months, I've been watching television and I've been seeing ads by the Rent Stabilization Association. And I'm asking myself, how is it that landlords need to get rent increases and yet they have all this money to hire ad agencies and put together an ad campaign and spend millions of dollars? I would really like to know how much money those landlords have spent paying for television commercials. I would really like to know how much money those landlords have spent paying for television commercials. And let me ask you this, and you tell me what this tells you. On the commercials, when they say the actor is saying, "Well, that's just it." He's portraying a plumber. He's not really a plumber. The ad agencies didn't even go out and talk to real workers that are performing this work for the landlords. They hired actors to do it. What does that tell you? Secondly, I find it interesting that, you know, the tenants will march across the Williamsburg Bridge or the Brooklyn Bridge to keep their rents in line, but I never see landlords marching across the bridge to keep their rents up. And why is that? Because they have millions of dollars to pay lobbyists and pay off politicians. Mind you, two of the biggest politicians in New York were now sent to jail because they had corruption charges with developers. We don't have ad agencies. We don't have millions of dollars. What we do have is the Rent Guidelines Board. And I ask you to do what's in your heart and what's fair. Please, roll back the rents.
Thank you. Catherine Mathias?
Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Mathias and I am a proud member...
Speak up and hold the mic close to your mouth, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Mathias and I'm a proud member of the Flatbush Tenant Coalition. I live at 181 Hawthorne Street, and I've been here for 39 years. I'm a Jonas Equity tenant. He's a prime predatory landlord. He has unindated us with a bunch of MCIs and I'm on a fixed income. I've worked for the city for 26 years and we have counterreacted every MCI he's...
Speak into the microphone, please.
Sorry, he gave us new windows that our previous landlord gave us. And this winter, my family couldn't even sleep in one of the rooms. I just recently was at DRC on Friday, bringing in a third MCI to us. He's harassed a lot of the residents that don't speak English. I am responsible for paying my rent and I make sure one of the tenants in the building that has a three-bedroom, the only three-bedroom in my apartment, in our building, that has a three-bedroom. And they're Haitian. And if I didn't go to them and I said, "Okay, now, you know you have to give me the money for the rent," so I make certain I go and pick up their rent every month on the 3rd of the month because they're basically under SSI and some type of disability. So I have to go and pick up their rent every month because he comes in there unannounced and just will come in there, do repairs, alleged repairs. You know, they called me Christmas Eve one year and said, "I'm Kathy." The sink fell down. I called the landlord and I said, "The sink is not fixed." And he was like, "Well, well, we'll try and get that," says, "No, we're gonna get there tomorrow. The sink has to be fixed because it's gonna be Christmas Eve." They've harassed us. The superintendent comes in, he doesn't do any repairs, but he's outside washing his car. We need a rent rollback. Like I said, I keep from buying my drugs at times, my medication from the doctor. Our landlord has done nothing but harass us. For the same Haitian family, he tried to get the resident in that building. He wanted me to go along with him to offer her $50,000 to move from a three-bedroom apartment to a studio. I said, "She's been in that apartment for years and years and she's on dialysis. Why should she move from a three-bedroom to a studio?" No, I'm for my residents. I'm a tenant advocate. I'm not for you. So these are some of the harassment tactics that he's using.
Sorry Ms. Mathias, but your time is up.
Well, I am now asking for a rent rollback for the rest of the residents in my building. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wants to testify, who needs to speak, needs an interpreter in Spanish? ¿Hay alguien que quiera testificar que no necesita un intérprete en español? Okay, thank you, and thank you to our interpreter. Well, we might have one tenant. Nope. Okay. Thank you. ¿Necesitas un traductor? Okay, thank you. Claudette Augustine?
Good evening. 21 years ago, I came in this country. I came from France and I never thought one day I would be in front of you. And for someone like me to come out of my apartment, that mean it is tough for us. I am living in a rent stabilized apartment for the past 20 years. And I raise a young man right now who is in college. So he just stepped down a little bit, hopefully for a little bit, in order to help out with the rent. And he wanna make sure while he's away, that his mom has a place to stay. And he also wanna make sure that when he come back, he has a place to stay. So I'm not here to complain about how much money I have to pay. I heard the man earlier saying he is tired two years complaining. My issue is if I have one, two, or three jobs to pay my rent and why it is that I'm not getting back what I paid for. I heard today the expression of business. Actually, it never came to my mind. I just wanted a place to stay. But I realize I need just more than a place to stay. It's a business. And right now, I wanna make sure that I get something for my money. I want the same way that you get paid and have your family to be taken care of or have your business taken care of, then I be able also to get back something for my money. So far, for the past 20 years, it hasn't been the case. Even if you guys has frozen the rent, it hasn't helped, it hasn't helped anybody. What are we doing? What are you guys doing to balance that? You get money, we want something. And what I want right now, for a fair share, for a fair exchange, because business is exchange. I want a rollback rent. That's what I want. I want some money back.
Thank you, Ms. Augustine. The next three speakers are Nathalie Bolden, Jen Berkeley, and Jill Rappaport.
Hi, my name is Nathalie Bolden. I'm a member of Crown Heights Tenant Union and I'm also a resident of Crown Heights and I've been living there for the past 37 years. My landlord, Achilles Management, bought our building last year for $44 million. They're from Sweden, okay? And the first thing I said to them when they bought the building is, "Us rent stabilized tenants, we're afraid that we're gonna lose our apartments." And he says, "No, no, no, you don't have to worry, but when you move out, then the rents are gonna go up to market value." They're taking studio apartments, turning them into two-bedroom apartments and charging $2,500. Now, last year, we fought for a rent rollback. We didn't get that. We got a 0% for a one-year lease. What the landlords are doing is trying to force the tenants to sign a two-year lease. And they're not sending you your lease renewal in a timely manner. And when you get it, they have checked off a two-year lease. They're trying to force us not to sign a one-year lease. Also, I heard someone say that unemployment is down now, but you have to check if unemployment was up for the past five years. If unemployment just came down this year, people who are unemployed, they have bills to pay, they have monies that they owe and things we have to live. So I'm asking for a rent rollback. The landlords are saying that they need money, but when someone is pushed out of their apartment, they put all new appliances, they gut the apartments out and they fix it up. Our landlord told us we had to get rid of our washing machines because the plumbing was bad and they were putting in a laundry room. They're not putting in a laundry room. They're taking the apartments that tenants are pushed out of, they're redoing them and they're putting in washing machines, dryers, and dishwashers. So I'm asking for a rent rollback or a rent freeze. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen Berkeley? Jen Berkeley, not here? All right. Jill Rappaport?
Hi, Tom. I live in Chelsea and I'm not a tenant. I live in Penn South, which is a middle-income co-op. But I lived for years as a rent stabilized tenant. And I think that the rent situation in New York is insane. People aren't making the kind of money that allows them to pay a median rent of, I think I read in the papers today, $3,100. That is not a rent that can be paid by the people who are earning the salaries that working people earn in New York. And landlords, in addition, I don't quarrel with small landlords. I think they're being driven to charge too much by developers and by landlord organizations like the lady you mentioned, Glenwood Management and organizations like that, which are basically, you know, criminal organizations, I think. There is a reason, I mean landlords do need to pay for the things that they're providing their tenants, but they do not need to make outrageous increases that are not representative of their needs and they should not be allowed to harass, criminally harass tenants, which is happening all over Chelsea and I don't doubt that it's happening all over Brooklyn. I've heard the stories that people are telling. And those stories should be enough for you guys. It should be enough to hear all of these tenants. And I don't see a lot of landlords here, for some reason. The tenants are bleeding and they need help. And the city is being destroyed by this inflationary climate of rent increases year after year. Yet there should be a rollback. There should be a freeze. That should continue for quite a few years to make up for what tenants have been gouged over the past many, many years since Ed Koch.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Rednova Andrews, Lenessa Frederick, and David Powell.
Good evening, RGB Board. I am here this year. I was here last year. So basically what's going on here, these landlords are killing us. We work days and we work nights and it's impossible to pay a rent because when we pay a rent, basically all our money is spent. I mean, just think about how hard it is as a mother when you have to pay rent and then have food for your children. And I'm facing that daily. Just this morning, my son was going on a school trip. He's 17 years old. And he came to my door and he knocked. "Mommy, can I have $10 to go on the trip?" And I'm like, "Wow, I know you were going, but I had to get the rent. I had to buy the money order for the rent." So I bought the money order and I don't have any money. And he stood there and he was like, "Really mommy? Oh my God, you know I was going on the trip." I'm like, "I know, but son, go in the kitchen and try to make a sandwich. Pour some juice in a bottle and bring it because I don't have the $10." When you're faced with that situation where you have to pay your rent, you gotta choose between buying food, giving your son $10 to go on a school trip that he so hardly worked and earned. My 26-year-old finished college in Morrisville. I'm happy for him, but he wants to live in New York. This is where he was born. This is where he grew up, apart from the four years that he stayed in Morrisville. But he cannot afford to live here. I would like all my children here with me in New York City. But we have to run. There's a lot of us running. I don't wanna run. I wanna stay here. I love here. Our landlord, I'm living at 125 Lenox Road, that landlord is a gold digger. All he wants is program from the city. Program. People that work, you don't want us. Our $1,300 and $1,400, he don't need that. It's $3,000 and $4,000 that he gets monthly, not to mention the basement. There's people living in the basement as I speak with leases, leases in the basement and nobody sees these things, okay? He constantly harassing us with repairs. I've been there 16 years.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to interrupt you.
No hot water. We would like a rent rollback. We would love a rent freeze. All the years that they've been exporting from us, it's time for us to have a heart and give us something back. What do we want?
Rent roll back!
When do we want it?
Now!
Thank you so much.
Lenessa Frederick? Is Lenessa Frederick here? Okay. David Powell?
Good evening, Board. Thank you everybody for staying, for showing the strength of Brooklyn's tenant movement. My name is David Powell and the Director of Organizing and Advocacy at the Fifth Avenue Committee. Also the Director of Organizing Advocacy at our affiliate, Neighbors Helping Neighbors. Many of our members testified here this evening. There's two things I just want to point out in addition to supporting the call for a rent rollback, which our own data supports. I said this last year, I'll say it again, and I hope it's not lost in the Board. You know, the so-called small property owners that come before you at these hearings, even though they are a smaller number, they're even smaller in the universe of who owns rent stabilized housing. So I really hope the Board keeps that in mind and balances that reality. The RSA let it slip in the 90s that something like 87% of the rent stabilized housing stock was owned by 13% of the landlords of New York City. And I think we all know that the corporatization of rent stabilized housing has even increased in that time. Rent Stabilization Association didn't make that mistake twice. They've never released a statistic around that. But the majority of our landlords are corporate landlords. They're not the people you see coming here before you. Perhaps they do deserve a different solution. The other thing I want to point out, which I think is even more important, is a comment was made, I believe, by Mr. Walsh, that you can't set rent adjustments based on the actions of a few bad actors. But I think what's being lost in that comment, and I hope it's not lost in the entirety of the Board, is that the universe, this marketplace, is dominated by bad actors and by bad practices, right? That is the context we're living in, right? We're living in the context of multiple MCIs, loopholes in the rent regulation laws, many, many years where this Board gave increases that were not due to landlords. We're dealing with all of these things. So while you did not, as a Board, solely create this crisis, you are responsible for making decisions within the context of the reality that exists now, not some idealized reality where, you know, everybody behaves and plays by the rules. They're not playing by the rules. We're being rent gouged. We're being displaced from our city. We need you to step up and effectively recognize that reality and give us not what we want, but what we need. And what do we need?
Rental back!
When do we need it? What do we need?
Rental back!
When do we need it? Now! Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Yes, ma'am? Come forward.
Please give us your name. Good evening. My name is Julia Tenness. I'm from Flatbush. I belong to the Flatbush Tenant Coalition. And I didn't have anything prepared, but I just want to say something. We all heard all the testimonies and all these people have testified. So many people cannot tell the same lie. So we know what they're saying is very true. So we're really looking for you guys to take exactly what you heard from the people and vote on that because the majority already said what need to be done, which is a rent rollback. New York City is a very rich and wealthy city, controlled by the rich, but it was built on the sweat of the poor. The poor has the right to live in this city. They should not be kicked out when they built a city for the rich to live in. Furthermore, the rich cannot live without the poor. They wait for them because the poor is the one that doing all the work. The rich just enjoy the ride. So I'm asking you to really look into it and support every vote that people ask you to do. Rolling back the rent. We demand it now. When do we want it? Now! Rent rollback. Please, we're asking you. And I believe that the majority of everyone here... Please, we're asking you, and I believe that the majority of everyone here will vote on that if you're looking for a future career, because your future career will come from the people, will put you in there and will take you out. Rent rollback. Rent rollback.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Thank you. Do you want, come forward, please. Good evening, please give us your name.
Yes, my name is Dawn Jones. I wasn't gonna come to speak this evening, I was really coming here and supported a tenant. I'm a former rent stabilized tenant who has purchased a cooperative, but I actually had to move in a brownstone in a room in order to purchase it. So, and when I go back to my former complex, my neighbors are over, way over two thousand dollars a month. I moved into the apartment at five ninety, back in the late nineties. In two thousand and ten, I left at fifteen hundred. As the previous speaker spoke about, I got MCI's, I'm a city employee for twenty-five years, I work right down the block in Human Resources Administration. I'm at work till eight o'clock PM every evening doing one-shot deals. So I really encourage you, when I first heard a rollback, I said, but I'm sitting here listening tonight, and I really encourage that you all do rent rollbacks, because we have cases each and every day, our coworkers, we're burnt out, 'cause we're at work until eight o'clock at night, every single night, doing one-shot deals for tenants. And it's not easy to try to get the down payments for these cooperatives. These cooperatives are asking for twenty-five thousand dollars or more. I sacrificed, but everybody can't do what I did in order to get a cooperative. I was in a home of a doctor who was actually in foreclosure. So people can't even purchase homes. They have issues with tenants. So I really encourage that if you wanna keep our citizens in their apartments, that you really look into doing a rent rollback. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, could you tell me what's a one-shot deal?
A one-shot deal is when you get behind in your rent. We have working people coming in with really good jobs. It's a whole lot of city employees that come in there because the rent goes up and our salaries do not. We may be getting a three percent this year, but most of the time, we get zero percent in our, you know, like for instance, I've worked for the city since nineteen ninety, and my salary is fifty-eight thousand dollars a year. Okay? I do have a college degree, but that's, that's all I make, and that's why I had to move out of my rent stabilized apartment. Like I said, I left in two thousand and ten paying fifteen hundred, I would've been up to two thousand. My friend, I have a friend who's a legal aid attorney, she's over two thousand dollars a month, and we just cannot keep up with the increases.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Could you give us your name, please?
Good evening. My name is Shirley Deacon, and I live in, I'm a part of the Flatbush Tenant Coalition, and I live in apartment building, which is rent stabilized. But I lived there for a number of about thirty, forty, almost forty years.
Could you hold the microphone closer to your mouth? Thank you.
I'm saying, I lived there for almost forty years, and they would love for me to come out. No, that's not fair, we all have a right to live in a house, right? You agree? Yeah, we all have to live somewhere, we can't live in the street. The city have so much problem with people in the shelter and people on the street. And what I see is happening now is all the developers are trying, I have friends with houses, developers are asking them to sell them their house. So one of my friends asked, so when I sell you my house, where do I live? You hear what he says? Go to Florida. And she said, why you don't go? I would say the same thing. He's out of order. He's not supposed to want to tell the woman to go to Florida. They're trying to make big money in New York City, and I want to push out all the poor people from their little houses. It's not fair. We need a rent rollback, and we need it now. When do we want it?
Now!
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? No, I'm sorry, that's a two-minute limit. Anyone else? In the back? Yes, could you give us your name, please?
My name is Angela Bruno.
Good evening.
Good evening. I want to know, I know most of the speakers have spoken about rent stabilization and what it is, and in terms, they were talking about the MCI. My concern is, how is it, who approves the MCI? Who approves those MCI? The state? If the state does so, why are there so many MCI's with rent stabilization?
Because it's a state, it's a state-regulated program.
Somebody is passing the buck. Something is wrong somewhere, because no one knows when an MCI is approved. All you hear is, it was approved because no one contested it, which is untrue. So there's something that is being done that is incorrect and inappropriate. What is going on? And the gentleman spoke about the rent stabilization, and when you hear the advertisement on television, you think that the rent stabilization laws are for the landlords. You don't think it's for the tenants. Could you tell me, why is that? Who do you represent, Ms.?
I represent the city of New York.
Okay. Who is representing the landlords here? You all are? Why is it, what, what has happened that continuously it is, the MCI's are approved without the tenants privy having that knowledge?
That's not what this Board, that's not what this Board is voting on, that's state law.
Okay, so you can just go in and approve?
No, we don't have anything to do with MCI's. It's, it's a state program.
Okay, so someone is doing something inappropriately here, and maybe that needs to be changed, because, you know, you hear it all the time, MCI's are given to you, it's approved, and no one knows for what.
Right.
I was told we needed a roof, and I know there was no work done.
I'm afraid there's nothing that we can do about that, but thank you for your testimony.
Okay, thank you. I was just, and we need rent rollback, okay?
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much for your participation and your patience.